She's in traffic. She's coming, but she's stuck in traffic.
Thank you. Okay. This is the September seventeenth meeting of the committee to assess boards and committees in the town of Barnstable. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Barnstable Government Access Channel. And according to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, the chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording the meeting, and if so, to please make the president know. Seeing none, this meeting will be replayed on via Xfinity Channel eight or High Definition Channel one zero seven two. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video On Demand Archives on the Town of Barnstable's website. Okay, roll call. We got somebody to do the roll call?
I can do the roll call.
Why don't you do it?
Councilor Lucky.
Here.
Councilor Burden.
Present.
Chair Crowe.
Here.
Councilor Turkleson here.
Chair.
And we have word that Councilor Clark is on her way.
Councilor Clark is on her way.
Stuck in traffic.
Okay.
And we also have town attorneys helping us, Karen Nober and Allison Cattliano.
Thank you.
Okay.
We don't get to say present that way.
You're here again, so we can hear you.
Okay, moving to public comment. Any public comment, Larry?
The only thing I'm interested in is whether you're going to touch on the human services or not, whether you're going to do it later, or whether you're going to do that. I've seen that you've got recreation on your agenda.
Yeah.
I don't want to disrupt that.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so we're not going to touch on it. No.
I'll stay here.
Continuing our discussion on the purpose and functionality of town committee, we have Representative I hope from the recreation department. Can you introduce yourself and join us at the table?
Sure, sure.
Right here, wherever you want.
My name is Tony Lepola. And I am actually the only member of the commission here today because there was a little mix-up that they thought this might be virtual and a couple of members of our committee couldn't be here.
Okay.
Thought it was going to be, so I hope they will do justice to the commission and do that. I'm the vice chair of the commission with Renee at the helm. And I understand this is a conversation about what purpose of what we do and how you might be able to help us and...
Exactly, so why don't you give us some...
Feel free to ask some questions and I can give you some information on how you want to start.
Maybe just give a general rundown of what your duties are and what your charter is and let us know that and maybe a little bit what's going on recently.
Sure. I am three years on the commission. I am here as a citizen of Barnstable for four years full-time. I've retired. We had built a house here about a dozen years ago, but have been here now going on five years as full-time. We came here for one reason is the community, and one of the things that we wanted to do, my wife and I, is get back to the community, and this is one way. In thirty seconds, a little bit about my background, I'm a longtime educator, forty-plus years in education, and my background is in student services. So I've dealt with mental health and I've dealt with recreation, athletics. Those are all reports to me when I was working, worked in private schools most of the time. I see, and just to get off my soapbox, there is such a correlation between recreation and well-being of people, not just kids, but people, and especially the connection to mental health today. Recreation is such, wellness is such an important part. The commission itself is four members. It's supposed to be seven members. So we're down three. I maintain that the commission could actually be less. I don't think it needs to be seven. I think it could be five, but I have to say two things about the commission in my three years plus of work. They are so dedicated to this purpose of what they do, and the interactions with the recreation departments on recent mark broadly is excellent. They're, first of all, having had a lot of interactions with recreation people in the past, they're no better. They're dedicated, they're professionals, they know what they're doing. As you know through our charter, we are advisory. We don't make decisions, but we advise them, and I think our collaboration is good. There's good communication with them. We meet every other month. Reason for that is mostly because of Mark and John, who are so, so busy, if you know their work, they're out all the time. So we moved that back with lots of ad hoc meetings in between. When we have an issue, we can deal with that, and we do deal with that. The commission itself, I think, has good conversation about where things are. And just in my interactions with them, we have done things, and a lot of the things that have happened, happened before me. And I just, a couple of things from what Renee had put down, if you'd bear with me for a second, so I don't forget this. The commission had, Renee has an interesting leadership style in that she likes to get out to people. So she has what is called a road show. And every couple of years, she takes it out and invites the public, and we do a survey of the facilities in Barnstable. They're best, and I think one thing that this town has lots to be, is fortunate to have are really very good athletic facilities and recreation facilities, whether it be open space and hiking trails, beaches, et cetera, et cetera. But the other thing that happened, I did the last one. So they do it every two or three years, I did the last one. And the nice thing about it is when we went to the different sites, we often met with citizens there, people that have invested interest in those spots and had asked questions. And some of the things that came as a result of citizen input were things that actually came to fruition. The dog park, the public, I didn't know this, Renee told me this the other day, was that the non-smoking on the beaches are just two things that came as a result of citizen input that wanted to do that. I think that that work is essential. There's also a couple of things that are, I guess, formalities or things that we have membership on. We hold a membership on the Sandy Neck Commission. Renee actually holds that position. The planning commission is right now doing a study on open space and recreation. We have a spot there. And we also have a spot on the CPC that is open that actually I think I'm going to fill in the near future to do that. I think that that reflects a little bit about the real impact that this commission has and can have on that. The other thing that I love, my connection with kids from the past, because I've always worked with secondary schools, is that we have connections with the US commissions in Barnstable, and every other month, we will have a presentation by them on what they're doing, whether it's programs they're doing on drug education and alcohol and substance abuse, or just some events that they have transpired, but that's a nice connection to have that. We do that. We're having a presentation by the football coach from Barnstable High School next time to get a sense of what impact athletics have on kids and what parts that they can play. So I think that the part that the commission plays in the community is a good one, I think it can be more. I do think that our needs, our primary need is to try to fill, and I'm not sure if this is a town council position or whether we can have a discussion about it, but it is a seven-person committee, commission. Can it be reduced? Do we need seven? But we really would be nice to fill the one to two to three people on it. I don't know what the reason for it that is that we haven't filled them, but it would be nice, and so if there's one thing that I think we can collaborate on is try to do that. We want to support what you're doing, and anything that we can do, and any ideas that you have for us, obviously, we want to try to implement in our committee work. But I have found in my three years working, it's been a pleasure, that, you know, time is well-spent. Renee is a good leader. I've learned a lot about the town from her. We have other members, one of our members who had to leave, he didn't want to leave, but he had to because he took a job with the police department, Barnstable Police, and I guess there's a conflict there, and he had to give up the position on the commission to take that position on. So that brought us to four. So we had five, that brought us to four people on the commission. And I think that we have one member on the commission that is, has been, grew up in Barnstable, was a participant in many of the programs, and has been a longstanding member of the commission since then. He sees the value in that. So lots of good people that are doing, I think, really good work, and I'll just end my couple of words on the fact that the people, especially Mark and John, in their worlds in the rec department are just great people to work with.
That's great. I agree with you a hundred percent on getting kids on recreation and sports teams, because I think it really is vital to mental health and teamwork and the whole thing for the future. And those that don't participate in sports really lack or are missing that aspect of growing up, which I think the more we encourage kids to get into organized sports, the better. So we'll go over any questions, so we'll start with Councilor Burden.
Do I have any questions? I don't think I really do. I know I encountered you all at one of your site visits in West Barnstable at the community building there, and the first time I was ever able to get in that building, so I wandered all around it. But I think you guys are doing a good job. I have no doubt that the recreation commission is functional and serves a purpose, and I think you all are doing pretty well. It's too bad that there's not more people on it. Being on the appointments committee, I don't think we've had anybody apply in a long time for, and that's the reason why you have spots. It tends to be, it seems, at least of late, that people are applying for certain, there's a bunch of people for certain for its committees and commissions, but then there are others that just go completely unnoticed. And that, I mean, we could easily drive people in different directions, too. I don't know that we do that all that often, and say, hey, you know, you didn't get on to this one, but we really could use a person with your skills on the recreation commission or the open space or more people. I think of all the time that I've been on there, I don't think I've interviewed one person for the recreation commission.
We haven't.
Which is interesting if you think about it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But no, I don't have any questions per se. I think that you guys are doing well as it is, and, you know, if we can do anything to beef up the recruitment for you all, that would be something. But other than that, I have nothing. Thank you, no, I appreciate it.
I guess the only question, just thinking about the playgrounds have been such a, like a hot topic. Do you guys ever discuss playground development or planning? Does anyone ever come to you to pick your brains? I mean, from what I've guessed, it's like little groups of people in the area, like in the village that it's going to be in, kind of, kind of are working on that, but I'm just wondering if we need to think about, like, I mean, we're doing the open space and recreation plan, but it's like, is there something more that this group could be doing to help us think more broadly about recreation and how we access playgrounds and what do we need in the future? I mean, I'm assuming maybe it's not in that plan, but...
Well, I think the major work in the center of playground right now, I think that was, the genesis of that was because of safety, that they shut it down, and then, but what I know of the plan, it's a good one. I do think your point is that a lot of ideas come from a specific area of people so that they live or have a specific interest. Renee brings up, before I really got involved, was the pickleball course at Marston Mills came from a real interest in that community wanting to have it, and they are wonderful. I mean, as far as, they did a wonderful job in building them, but if you ever are up there, they're always being used, and as far as an access to a large group of people, that's really great. Your point is well-taken, though, about trying to get an understanding about playground. I think playgrounds, from the survey from the open space committee was the idea of playgrounds is on that. I also found interesting that sidewalks was on that, too, so getting people to the spots is also important, because some people just do not have access to cars. And so, you know, public transportation, walking and bike lanes would be a good one, but something that's really important.
I'm just wondering if also there might be some people on those smaller committees that maybe are interested in engaging with the recreation committee because they have some knowledge and some, you know, something that might be able to be useful for the development of other playgrounds that, I mean, I know Marston's Wheels wants a playground, so maybe there's some lessons learned, and maybe there's some people that might be interested in serving, you know, having an interest in, you know, recreation facilities in the town, but... Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you guys touch a lot of places, and it sounds like you need, maybe not a lot, not all seven, but it would be nice. I'm sure that if one person decides not to come or two people can't come, that really...
It gets hard to do...
Puts you in a bind.
...official business, but I, obviously, virtual meetings are very awful. But, you know, even if we could find that one more, I think that makes a decent difference.
Yeah, what I'm impressed by and maybe surprised by is your public outreach, because I would think staff, that would be incumbent upon them to do that. It's unusual for me to have a commission doing all this public outreach. I applaud it, but what's the genesis for that?
Well, it came before me, it really, I'm not sure how long Renee has, she said this is the third time, she calls it her road show. This is the third one, we did it last year, and she says they do it every two or three years, so it probably goes six or seven years back. But it is to get people, people that are, might be interested in a specific area to look at. Also gives, she also said, if there is a new commission member, it's a great onboarding tool, because you get to see the vast array of...
Now, how much public comment do you get? How much, like, to feed off of Councilor Turkleson, how much public comment do you have someone coming in and saying, this is an issue for me, I want this addressed? Do they come to you, or do they come to the staff?
I think it comes to a variety of places. To actual meetings, not that much. What will get, Renee seems to be a funnel for that, so that if people have an idea or an issue or concern, sometimes, I think that's because of longstanding participation in the commission, and then she'll bring it to a meeting and then we'll have a discussion about it. But I do think that people feel is if they do have, if there is a question or a concern, that they can bring it to someone. I also think John and Mark bring ideas and concerns to us, so...
Yeah, I want, I'll bring up something specific, because kiteboarders. Were you there when the kiteboarders came? This was not...
This is a couple of years ago, but I've heard about the end of that, yeah.
Yeah, they came a year ago. They went to the waterways, and then they went to you, and everybody was like, yes, okay? And then a kiteboarder came up to me this summer and said, what the heck? Why has nothing happened in an entire year? So I went to Chris Cannell and I said, what the heck? Why has nothing happened in an entire year when these kiteboarders came through, gave their blessings? So my question to you is, do you follow up? I mean, because that went just completely, and there's these poor kiteboarders, they lost two whole summers here, and it's, there's still nothing. So were you there when the kiteboarders?
I was not, I did not hear them coming to one of the meetings. I was at. She might, the person might have gone to an individual, to a meeting.
Yeah.
I can look into that, but I didn't...
No, just, but I'm serious, because you're doing a lot of community outreach, but you do follow up.
Yeah, well, that's a good point.
Do you say, hey, John, what's going on with the kiteboarding regulations?
It's always a good idea.
So I just wonder if you have a process for that?
Not that I think there's a formal process for it, but it should just be good practice when you implement a program to do a follow-up on it, just to see how it goes.
You know, it just seems like you guys are leaning way forward, way forward, but...
I know that.
I just wonder where your boundaries are.
Well, I think some of it, as the commission, because we are advisory, I think the assumption is that staff will look in, will keep an eye on that kind of stuff, and then let us know if there's an issue that we need to discuss. But it doesn't mean we can't discuss it.
Yeah. Like, you said, you guys brought the no smoking thing.
Yes.
How did you do that?
Well, according, this is before me, but according to Renee, it came with input from the public, and then it was brought through, and I'm not sure the exact process that had happened, but it came from concerned individuals that thought that that was the right thing to do, and it happened.
But it came to you guys?
It came to the commission, to Renee, from what Renee said, yes, it came to the commission.
That's interesting.
Same way with the dog park, I guess that was the genesis for creating it.
And then you gave it to the staff, and did you do follow-up on those initiatives?
Well, I think, I'm not sure that there was an immediate follow-up, but I have to look into it, I don't know of that.
Okay. And then the last thing, you talked about you have this relationship with the youth commission. I've never kind of thought of the youth commission as doing a lot of recreation. I know they do those programs and stuff. Who initiated that?
Again, I'm not sure where the genesis of that is, but it is, from my perspective, having men, and I'm not sure that they're an official member of the commission, but having them on the commission and making presentations about what's going on, they talk about events that they sponsor, whether it's events in substance abuse and prevention, or whether it's just a social event that gets kids a safe place to go on a weekend. I think that's essential, and that we should not lose that. Also, it's nice to get their perspective on ideas, not that they have the experience to give that, but I have always, whenever I have run a committee, I always would like, always liked to add a student to it, because you do need that respect.
Are they on your commission?
I don't know that they are officially on our commission, I know that they come regularly.
Okay, because I know they fall under their guidance, if you will, is from the recreation department. And then I was saying, I just had a conference with Councilor Clark, and we had one of the speakers say that prisoners have more access to the outside than kids these days. So it's pretty important to keep doing that.
Well, with the advent of social media and technology, it's something that we should always keep, be mindful of, because that is something that, and we hear it every day, that is all, can be consuming, and we do need the physical aspect of well-being for young people and so forth.
If I could, the youth commission, under our code, it says, under interrelationships, it says the board interacts primarily with the recreation commission and golf commission. So there's language in the youth commission for making arrangements.
I'd also like to message to the audience that Councilor Clark has joined the meeting.
Apologize for...
No, no problem. Can you go back and explain your relationship with other entities in town, whether it's the golf commission or whatever, how that works? Because, like, for example, two weeks ago today, I went with Lindsay Council and members of the town architects and that kind of stuff, to look at both projects for the playgrounds of both Centerville and Austin. So I went through the whole and got an idea. But I didn't hear from anybody from the Cape, your organization. What role would you have to play in that?
There are, what we try to do, again, we have four members...
Just confused about what your mission is, that's what I'm...
Is to have a, is to have a, one of the commissioners involved, so on the Centerville, take the Centerville playground, there is one of the commissioners is, I'm not sure that I can say that he is an official part of that committee that's doing it, but he attends meetings, so that when we have our meetings, he makes, he'll make a report to us on the progress there. I mentioned Sandy Neck, same way. At every meeting, Renee, who is the liaison to Sandy Neck, will make a report on the progress and the work that Sandy Neck is. I have been, and I will be continuing to do the work with the planning commission on their study now, so I, we make that. So I think it's our, it's our style to have some member to have a direct connection to the projects that are ongoing. I think your point about follow-up is an important one, and that same person that saw it, it's the beginning phases, can also do the follow-up after, so we can do that. But that's what we've tried to do, things that have direct connection to us, to have a member that is dedicated to that, and then they report back to us on a meeting.
As an advisory commission, you, like, I assume these playgrounds have come to you at some point, and you've, for your group, and have you studied them and said, yes, we would like to see this go forward, or how do you...
Usually what happens is we'll get a report from John, as the director of recreation, on the project.
Okay.
When you say advisory, we'll give feedback. Because we don't have, we're not the final say, both in the project and the scope, nor in the financial aspect of it, what we're mostly there is to support him, but also to give him feedback on what we think, and also that might be, what about going to the public and getting some more input on that, or have you heard that? So, you know, advisory is an interesting, is an interesting role to play, because you want to make sure that they, that the staff knows that we're supporting them, we're not, they're not, they don't report to us, that they don't have to have, that have our approval on some things, but I do think that relationship there is very good. But I do think that they're giving us the input on what they think the project entails, and then we give feedback on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Chris?
Thank you. Again, I apologize for being late, and I appreciate what the recreation commission does. I don't follow it very regularly. I do see Renee King come to the Sandy Neck board meetings and have her input. Do you think there's too much pressure on the recreation commission committee to offer a representative to both the CPC, Community Preservation Committee, and Sandy Neck? I'm just wondering.
Well, I mentioned that before, Renee is committed to Sandy Neck, she really thinks, I mean, first of all, what a treasure for the town to have that.
In her show.
She and I have talked about me becoming the representative of the CPC, and I probably will take, I want to learn a little bit more about it, and I'm trying to schedule a talk with the chair, and I'm forgetting the person's name, forgive me.
Council.
And I'm going to do that. I've read the handbook. It obviously is an essential part of what we do, and especially with the financial aspect of, with projects. So I'm toying with that idea for me to become that, and I, you know, it just does make sense, you know, we have these roles. She's the chair, I'm the vice chair. It does make sense that those two roles would have a seat at those two positions, because they're major parts in the work of the commission. So is it too much? I don't know yet. I haven't found that out. My background is I'm used to being on committees and know about work that happens outside committees, although I am retired and I'm trying to move away from that, too. But I do think, I just read the handbook through once, and I see, wow, that's an essential part of what the town does, so I'm trying to get some more information on that moving forward.
Thank you for your commitment to the town's work.
I just have one other question. In the meetings, so the meetings are held virtually?
All but one. And it's the best meeting, because that's where they honor all of the, it's the awards for the people that have served recreation throughout the year, mostly summer staff and things like that, and they give awards to the lifeguard of the year and to the gate attendant of the year. And so we all, we're there, and we get pictures and all that. It's really fulfilling to hear that, and their families come, and it's in the boardroom over there, and it's kind of nice. But all the rest are virtual.
Right. And you're, do you, during the meetings, do you ever engage the town council liaison on his or her input, or is it, or do they just more kind of, they're there on screen and participating?
It's more us than the town council. I think that the liaison, most of the liaison work with the town council is done with Renee directly.
Yeah. I was just curious. And when is the in-person meeting here? Is that coming up soon?
That's in July. So you have to wait until next year. It's at the end, it's at the end of the season.
Are they recorded?
Yeah. Yeah.
The pistols?
She does her spiel at the beginning and saying, I assume, I've never gone to watch it, but...
I watch all the meetings on YouTube, and I just feel, maybe it's just been a while.
Well, only every other month, so...
Because that's how I catch most of them. I'll have to go back in time.
I had, I know that, I watched the open space and recreation first meeting, when they kicked it off. I had to watch that because my step was telling that my wife ruptured her Achilles tendon, and that was the day she had surgery, so I finally got her set, and I said... And I said, I'm going to leave you for 10 minutes and go watch that. But it's nice to have that possibility, so if you do miss, or you can go back and watch something else.
And we're very fortunate.
I have one more question. Particularly in Hyannis, although we do have schools in West Part of Spur and Marsden's Mills, do you engage with the school at all? Because most of the recreation facilities available to children in Hyannis are owned by the schools. So how do you engage with that at all, just to keep up to date and?
The interesting thing is, our mission is that we do not deal with the programs during the school, basically the school year. Those are run by the school. So basically, it's a facility issue.
It's a facility.
We get to use those facilities after the school year is over. The interesting thing about that is that most of those interactions, if we do have them, come via the Youth Commission, if that's coming, and it's mostly upper level. So we don't have a lot of connections with elementary or middle, which probably is something we should, we should look into. Because while we have input from grades nine, 12, we don't have a lot of input. Not to say that they have to come to a commission and make a presentation, but we could get more input. That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, because, I mean, the best playgrounds are the school playgrounds. I mean, there's none better than the Barstow United Elementary School.
And the other thing, you know, because of the vast array of facilities, it also, the upkeep on them is hard.
Yes.
I know, it's expensive, but it's time-consuming. And DPW has only so many hours, and there's only so many dollars. And if you don't stay, if you don't stay on top of things like that, they tend to deteriorate. And, you know, whether it's just the playground surfaces, to make sure that they're safe, you want kids to have a place to go. But it's a challenge.
I know we have beach cleanup days. Does anybody ever have, like, cleanup days related to our other recreational resources?
Not nowhere.
I mean, that might be something to consider. It's like, you know, we, the only reason I say that is, I mean, I got a call from a resident, and the area hadn't been cleaned down by Quocket Lake. And it probably just hadn't gotten to or whatever, but a bunch of residents went down and cleaned it up. So it's kind of like, are there areas where we have people who go to these places who may want to help us clean up the places that they spend time with their children in? Because, you know, if you walk around and there's a bunch of stuff on the ground, we could be picking it up ourselves as well. But also, you know, just, just something to think about. Community engagement, maybe more members.
If anything else? I want to thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
And it's always good to know about what's up with the Recreation Commission. Other than the fact that you desperately need a few more people, what other things can you think of that we can help you with?
Well, I'm not, there's nothing, Renee, I spent a little time with that. You know, there's specifics. Not that when we said no, our relationship, I think our relationship with the department is really good. And I hope that you feel as if there are things that we can discuss, you will come to us to, so if something. And that's what I, I'm a big believer in open communication, but, you know, that, that there should never be a topic that we can't discuss. So if there's something you want to have, or bring up as an item for discussion at a meeting, just let us know. We're glad to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving to the next item, approval of the minutes from August 18th. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Next, next meeting. First thing we have to decide, well, obviously the day and time, but what ideas we have for somebody to like to talk to. We had asked Cheryl Powell, I think, to come in from the.
Well, it is September.
It is. That's what I was going to start talking about. But, I mean, we can, you wanted to pick the next meeting, and then we could do matters not really anticipated.
Yeah. Okay, so September, I mean, what's our, you said September, is that, when's our deadline? Is that it?
We had said, I don't think we had a date certain. It was in September. I didn't say a specific day, I don't think. I got an email from.
Have you been to a recent meeting? Have they said anything?
I watched one the other day. You were there.
I was there, but I had to step out because I had another.
I didn't watch the entire thing.
I didn't watch the whole thing, but they were discussing the proposal.
It was contentious, though.
It was?
What I saw, I mean, what I saw. And I have to watch the entire thing.
What proposal are you talking about?
Well, remember how we were discussing how, well, we, we kind of gave them a, not an ultimatum, but a charge to say, we would like for you to present to us a plan for how to, to, I guess, reclaim the missions of the Human Services Committee. And that if they could provide us with a vision of how we're going to move forward and make the Human Services Committee, you know, a viable committee. And then how would the interchange, how could the intersection between the town and the Human Services Committee be better? And we had went so far as to say that you should come up with, or we'd like to see, you know, maybe there's a position that you could imagine existing that would allow you to better liaise with the town in order to, you know, we, it was a pretty far-reaching conversation. But it was more like an inspirational, an inspirational conversation. Then also to give them a timeline so that we could make a determination because there was some, is, was some skepticism about where that committee is going. And I said, September. And I got a note from Cheryl Powell saying, and this was maybe two weeks ago, saying that they had something coming, but it wasn't ready. Maybe it was going to be coming soon.
Okay, I just received from Cheryl, it said, "I heard back from the other subcommittee member late last night, and we'll forward to Cindi Level by 8:00 AM today, to be forwarded to the other committee members for any last-minute corrections by Friday, then send it to Cynthia to forward to you, or anywhere else that needs to go." Okay, so they were talking about Friday.
I guess so. Because there was some debate, I remember, with a part of the meeting I did watch, which I suppose I watched until right around the U-Lat at that time. It was, they were trying to, there was some debate about, they had the parallel problems. One was the report to the Town Manager, which is, I guess, their annual committee report. And then one was the report that they were, or their vision statement, whatever it was, however it was going to be packaged to us. And they were having some debate about how they were working on that. And then there was a part where they were having, in my opinion, possibly serial communication via email regarding the revisions to both of those documents. So I don't know where it ended up, but.
Yeah, they should be doing that in a meeting.
Right, and that was what you said.
That's what I said, but they said, no, Cheryl is the node. She goes out and pulls and out and pulls and doesn't.
Serial communication.
Well, that's what I said. I said, this doesn't sound right now.
Right. So then we have some issues possibly with both leading law compliance too, which is something that we heard about previously. So I just, I mean, for me, I want to have some kind of, I want to have, I want to see this document. And I want to see what, so we can make our recommendation, because I don't want to beat this to death, and I want this to come to a close, one way or the other. That's me, anyway.
You're talking about the Human Services.
Specifically, yes. Well, you know, yeah, generally speaking, the Human Services, but this committee too. We don't want it to go off and.
No.
Ever, ever, ever.
So, just so we don't break any, meanwhile, relations on that, on the heels of that. If that document is given to, I don't know, who will be given to? But if it's given to John, is he allowed to share that with us so we can read it ahead of time for our next meeting? Or do we get it in the meeting and read it while we're all sitting here? And, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
How?
As long as we don't discuss it, right?
Right, he can share it because it's not you talking to each other.
Deliberated.
It's a report. But so, once you get it, you should not be emailing each other. You should discuss it in the meeting.
Yeah.
But when they're preparing it, they should be doing it in a meeting and not through email back and forth. You know, even if it's going to the Chair and back, you know, that's, it should happen in a meeting.
Okay, so if you receive that document, you could share.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it better we sent it through Cindy, and then she sends it to us?
She could certainly do that. But the, but the key point is that that document is not any of you speaking to each other.
We're just reading it.
So you're not deliberating outside of a meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we're prepared.
I mean, it's good to get in the habit of letting Cindy do it, but.
So we won't sit and go reading.
Well, I can do it and then just share it with the five of us here.
Yeah, I mean, you could say, I received this from the Human Services Committee, I'm providing it to you. And don't comment on it.
In preparation for the next meeting.
Yeah, we can discuss this at the next meeting. And nobody answer it.
Now, we're supposed to wrap this up, this whole committee, by the end of this month.
We'll need an extension. We haven't gone through all the committees.
Yeah.
We can just keep going, can't we? Do we have to?
Oh, we'd have to ask.
Because we had to do, we had to postpone our start date, too. I don't have how it's written.
Right, can do it as present.
But so I want to, so for upcoming agendas, so this, this agenda had Recreation and Human Services, right? That was what it was supposed to be?
No, just Recreation.
Just Recreation. I think we should put several, if we're going to, so we've spent 40 minutes, roughly, you know, just so that we don't, as again, so we don't drag it off into, you know, forever land. We should do two or three people at once. And then have a topic for discussion at the end of the meeting, if it's going to continue to be the Human Services. Do you know what I mean? Like, so if we, so we'll have, we could say two or three commissions are going to come. We'll keep it, we'll keep it brief, or, you know, not brief, but as brief as reasonable. And then, at the end of that, we'll have the discussion. So far, the only, the only one that we've really focused on, that we really feel that we need to have an in-depth review process with, is the Human Services Committee. And it seems likely that that will remain true, right? I mean, it doesn't seem like there's going to be, there may be. But, so we can do three next time, have an agenda item specifically to settle this Human Services thing, if possible. And then do the next one in a similar fashion.
Okay, any?
That's my, that's my opinion. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I think three might be too many, but two is good. Depending on how long some of these go.
Right, whatever people want to do.
So what do we say for next meeting? Any, let's throw out some, what people would like to hear from?
Do you want to hear from Waterways and Shellfish? We're both saying no. In a way.
That makes sense.
Waterways and Shellfish?
So we're going to invite the departments, department heads, and the chairs, and anyone from the committee who would like to come in.
We'll see who shows up.
Well, I mean, I just, yeah, what the feedback I got from somebody was, you know, I wasn't invited to come. I would have liked to have.
Yeah, it would be open invitation.
You know, so I'm like, I don't think it was meant that they couldn't come. I just don't know that it was disseminated to the, to the boards, committees and commissions themselves that any of them.
Except they did want to trap a forum for them.
Well, yeah, they'll realize that, hopefully.
Okay, Waterways and Shellfish?
You know, what are we expecting? Because nobody's going to come in here and say, I have no value whatsoever.
If they're having a bad day.
If I, if I might, I, I think when you started out, you talked about everyone looking at the lists and saying, I've never heard from them people. I have no idea what they do. And I think you should, for time purposes, focus on those. And I don't know if Shellfish and Waterways are two of those. It may be. But I think that that's the best use of your time, is focusing on, in on the ones that you're not hearing from. I mean, you guys hear from ZBA and all the regulatory all the time, right? There's some that you hear from all the time, or you're there and they're very active. I think you should, my recommendation would be to focus on the ones that you don't know yet.
I don't know that we do hear from them. I mean, like, Waterways and Shellfish, having watched so many of their meetings, I'd say leave those guys alone because they're doing.
They're active, sure.
Well, they're regulatory on some level, right?
They're not regulatory. They're fine.
They are in a way. I mean, they.
Still, they make, but they make.
But I would focus on the advisory committees, because that's where you have to.
They are able to, to make change.
Well, Shellfish and Waterways, they actually develop, I think, rules and regulations, don't they?
No, they, the, um, Shellfish Constable or representative, I can speak more to the Shellfish Committee. The Shellfish Constable or a staff person is at their meetings, and they give updates on open and closed areas, pending changes to regulations or fee changes. Update on the, what DPW's plans are for the restoration of the no, scutter lane boat landing. So things that affect the commercial, recreational.
They make recommendations to the Town Manager.
Yeah, they make recommendations.
I remember two contentious things, now that I'm thinking about it, that fell, I don't know what happened with them, but they fell out of my sight. Was the being able to change the ownership from a person to a corporation
Corporation, sure.
for an individual Shellfish grant. And then the other one was commission fees more, making commercial Shellfish permit fees more in line with commercial purpose, because they're very cheap. Whatever happened to those two? I guess you guys are not the people to ask. Forgot that I was.
Yeah, I think, yeah, but the ownership got resolved. I don't even know how that done, how it ended.
But those were fairly contentious, even though, even as a regulatory, or advisory, or, I don't know. Golf, you always, we talked about golf. Golf is one that we were kind of offensive about.
Because we didn't hear from the Golf Committee. We heard from Chris Gonella.
But much as we just now have seen.
But then I spoke with the Town Manager, and he welcomes golf, and John was at.
I think, I think more to what the attorney was pointing to us, and I appreciate your guidance for sure, is I think we also need to come together as a group and decide, how do we need advisory committees to help us better? And what is the mechanism? Because then, you know what? The Golf Committee can exist. And this committee can exist, and that committee can exist, because we actually have a mechanism where we're having the place where there's an interrelationship. Right now, like, Recreation Committee is doing their thing, and they're doing a great job. And if we're not kind of, there's not a connection of go-between, and maybe there doesn't need to be. I mean, maybe some committees just don't need to, but on the same hand, we certainly might not really know what's going on.
Well, we had this discussion in the meeting, in the committee on.
Code.
The code, last time, if I remember correctly.
We have the same code.
A lot of it begins and ends with reporting. Remember, we had that whole back and forth.
Well, I think, I think that's right. I mean, I think Kristen is exactly right. I don't know that we need to talk to any more committees. I think we have to get the process required. What is the value? And we just talked about the Human Services. Yes, they spent an hour talking about reporting.
Right.
Okay, and that, again, should have been a five-minute conversation. If we had clear mechanisms, and you brought it up at the other meeting, why don't we just abolish the reporting? Because nobody's doing it. But we have to, I think we should have a discussion right here in this room about what we need to see from the committees, right? You know, what would be the best?
Do we want to have committees report to us at, you know, after a newly elected president and vice president comes in, that we receive some information from a chair about what they think they see in the next year? So that leadership knows what kind of their priorities are in the next year. And that information gets disseminated to the council members, so that the council members kind of know, oh, Recreation's thinking that we need to think about non-smoking at our beaches. I mean, I had no idea that's how that got there. You know, maybe we need to do something like, kind of at the beginning, I mean, I would say around the strategic plan, but we don't do that every year, so that won't really work. So maybe we need to, like, make it a yearly thing, and we don't, like, have them come at little bits along the way that takes the next 15 months to get through all the committees. But we receive some kind of mechanism. What was the, what did you, what do you think you accomplished in the last year? What do you see in the next year? And then it reports back to leadership. It gets disseminated to the council. And then maybe we take some time at one of the meetings where we actually, we've read through, and we say, you know what? I really like what Recreation is doing, or has anybody thought about this? And we just have an open conversation about what the council thinks we need to do more, see more, engage more.
And maybe also looking at the code as to how it describes what the committees do, and whether that aligns with what they're actually doing, what you want them to be doing. When I was looking at the Recreation Committee, when he was speaking, is, you know, a lot of what they do is advise the Town Manager on the rules for the use of the facilities, which makes sense because the town facilities are under the manager's control. So there's a relationship with the council, but there's also really a strong advisory role with respect to the Town Manager. So I think looking at what the code says, and then matching that up with what you're hearing, might be helpful, too.
As far as annual reports, I, perhaps staff can fill us in. I believe that the town is catching up with the annual reports being submitted by the boys.
I believe it is.
So I, they got, the town got behind during COVID, understandably so. So I think that the annual reports are being collected. I mean, it's, it takes a while to prod and pull all that together, not only for the departments that are, that answer to the Town Manager, but the committee, commissions, and boards that report to the legislative side of the House. So I think that's coming, coming along slowly. But it takes a while to get the chairs to get it written and edited and collated, or however it gets processed. So an annual report is being reported to the town, but through the Town, Town Manager. And I don't think we need to be redundant about that. I don't think that forty-three reports are going to.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it needs to be even that official. I mean, I'm just wondering if it's like. I mean, I'm just wondering if it's like a one-page summary, this is what we've accomplished in last year.
That's what it will be, is a one-pager, is what's expected from the town report.
I just don't like that it's buried in something else. I guess I feel like if we think it's important to have forty boards, committees, and commissions helping us figure out what's going on the town, it's like, we have so many layers of like, it's all this siloing that is like, it's in this report and that. I, I'm saying, can we have a dedicated process that we say is the town council? These people are important to us? I mean, whether it's, we take it out of the annual report, and we separate it out and give it to us, and then we dedicate some time specifically around this process to drive what happens in the next year, as opposed to like burying it in a report. I mean, do we even ever talk about the annual report as a town council?
Oh, cause we don't have one.
But we have, uh.
Uh, did we ever?
No.
Yes, oh, yeah, and actually.
Like, we would get, you would get the book, and then we would sit up on the dais and discuss it?
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Don't put on over that.
That's what I'm saying, it's like, it's great to be in a report, but what you do with the data, what you do with all of this paper is what's important.
It's not even discussed.
Just don't give it to me, let's actually, like, take some time and talk about it, cause this is how we got to where we are, is we had to create an ad hoc, like, talk about committees.
We already. And frankly, a lot of the information, I think, that you're gonna find in the annual report, you will find in the budget narratives for the department.
That's true.
I, you know, I think we have a mechanism, and it's on the agenda, and it's the report from liaisons, committees, commissions. I think it's incumbent, you brought it up with the discussion here, it's incumbent upon us as liaisons to take the job seriously. And when something is of importance, maybe we, we tell the chair, hey, come to the town council meeting, and I'm gonna bring this up under this, and you can give a quick, that would keep it dynamic and keep it nimble. And then we hear about things. I don't want, I mean, just watching that discussion of human services, where they spend an hour talking about the report. Do the report to the town, and I don't want them spending their time on a report. I want them spending their time on issues. So as things come up, I mean, I brought a couple of things up as liaison to the zoning board that I thought people would be of interest to, and I brought them up during that thing, during that time. I don't think anyone else, except, you know, you bring up your village events.
Anons.
You know, I mean, the village events are fine, but.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know if like, if I bring something up about the CPC, I don't know that that engages conversation amongst us as a.
I would hope it would, if we.
As amongst a body of people who then, like, put the pieces together to help, to help plug those pieces in together. I thought the whole point was we wanted to be a little more plugged in with our boards, committees, and commissions. And, I mean, I don't, I think that that's a start, but I'm just wondering if we need to have a dedicated process where we take a more robust look at what's gone on and what's the future, kind of like strategic planning is, you know? I mean, we didn't do that, and that was a real disservice to this council.
Right.
So you're gonna take a lot of time, and a guy who doesn't like time.
I'd like to be here now.
But what I'm saying is, buddy, is they could report to us, and you will have read through it, and maybe then from there, we say, you know what? Golf looks good, this, human service is not looking so good, or, you know what? I don't, I, how, how does the council feel about where the committees are going the next year? I don't know.
And the, well, yeah, I, it's hard, if you don't make a, if you don't make a predictable process for people to follow, you end up right where we are right now.
Yeah.
And that's, I think that's pretty clear, it's clear to me, that if you don't have a system in place, you're gonna end up with whatever, and you end up with. We can say, okay, COVID made it so that nobody could report, oh, boy, that was five years ago, almost. I mean, if it were an expectation, it would be done. And so, it has to be, something has to be, it has to be systematized, and it has to be predictable. So, for instance, years ago, Jessica Rapgrassetti, who was, I think, my, the counselor in my seat, would have everybody come and report, presumably for this same reason, that they would run through a rolling, uh, uh, you know, schedule of people coming
Yeah.
and reporting on a given day, or, you know, you're coming this week, you're coming next week, you're coming. And at least it kept things rolling, and it was predictable, and then there was a process. You know, we're in the position, we're, we're supposed to make recommendations, not, you know, uh, which commit, which committees are, are not functional. We've pretty much done that, I think. And then how, what is, what are policies or procedures or strategies that seem reasonable to us to make this? Because this committee was called for a reason, I presume that it was because we felt, or we, or Felicia, whomever, felt that there was no system in place for this.
Yeah.
So we have to create a system. So like, a good recommendation, in my, in my opinion, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna clear away the committees that are either dysfunctional or non-functional or unnecessary. And then we've already, what were the other recommendations? Well, there was all that time I wasted thinking about something that already existed. But we can put that on the face of, you know what I mean? That a recommendation will, can be to, to embrace that, or to remind everyone that that exists, and that we, whenever we're faced with something that is, seems appropriate to delegate to a board, committee, or commission, that we do that thing first, long before we start discussing it at a public meeting, or in, or, you know, to make a decision about it. So, as a corollary to that, I don't remember, we had a couple other things that we wanted to recommend, which I'm sure are in the minutes, but. So why not recommend that we bring back the practice, past practice that did exist, and presumably worked okay?
Well, is there a format for these reports, so people aren't kind of recreating, and is there a format we wanna see?
We can say, we'll recommend that you produce a, a one-page document that represents the, is it already in the code?
That's, that's what. Having been for her committee chair, that's what the, the standing practice has always been, that each committee chair delivers an annual report that's a one-pager.
Uh, my question about that, though, and, and about.
Yeah, so that is the standard.
Like, and at the end of that, we all sit there, and we listen to forty boards, committees, and commissions come up here and go like this to us. What did we get? Did we have any better relationship with those boards, committees, and commissions at that time? I mean, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I hear you, but I, I disagree about that, that be, making our committees more engaging with the town council is the purpose of this committee. I don't think that's, that's our purpose, is to, to look at the effectiveness of the already existing committees and, and propose some to either be retired, or combined, or, um, new ones. I've heard chatter about something like that in the past. But, um, hearing our conversation in the past about utilizing our existing committees and making more robust use of them, like, um, uh, the CFAC committee.
Yeah.
Um, I sat at the CWMP meeting on Monday, I believe, and there's a, there's work that was done there that's being sent to the Board of Health. So, I took that to heart and made the recommendation, that's what's happening, so that we make more robust use of committee to committees, or committee to council, or some, stuff like that. I don't think they necessarily need to re, report to us, although that is on the, the to-do list if our committee, I mean, if our town council meetings can have an agenda that's not overloaded to a five-hour meeting. So, so that has been the expectation, as long as we're not going to have, um, you know, a, um, an agenda we're choking on. And that has been the more recent experience here. Uh, going back to, um, committees that, um, could be evaluated, that, um, Councilor Burdick suggested that were done, I don't think we are, cause there, and I have addressed this with the town manager, there are, um, some scholarship committees that meet once a year. Um, the Martin J. Flynn Scholarship Committee, I was like, oh, I wonder what they do. They hadn't met for years, I mean, there was no agenda, minutes, um, or even members. And I heard, oh, Joyce is on that committee, she's the, um, works in the town manager's office. When I asked her about it, she goes, oh, yeah, we meet once a year, and there's only about two thousand dollars left in that committee. I said, well, jeez, maybe we can talk to the scholarship committee, and they can fold that in and, and.
Yeah, because it was created, because it was created.
Cause it's created in a different way. But maybe we can look at how it was created, spend the money and retire it that way, um, bankrupt it. Spend it on, on a scholarship, there's two thousand dollars left. Uh, West Barnstable gave, I think, eight, fourteen hundred dollar scholarships. I mean, uh, West Barnstable Civic Association, that is. What I'm saying is, I don't think that the purpose for that committee is, um, relevant, as relevant as it was when it was, um, initiated. And maybe looking at how that committee can be retired would be.
So the. I guess, I guess the question is, the goal is to look to the effectiveness of committees.
This is what's a long name, it's a long name.
Question is, is like, this is a theoretical question, effectiveness for whom, for what? For, and so I think part of the job of this is like, if we as a council don't know what's going on in all of these areas because we are disconnected, I guess I feel like part of what we need to do is have a reconnection. Need they come all the time and report to us one by one, or we have some formal? I, I guess I just feel like what I thought I kept hearing was that we have sometimes no idea what's going on in these committees, and who they're serving, and how are they serving the council and the town as a whole? How do we bring all that together? And I don't have the answer to that, so.
Yeah. Well, we gotta create a system framework.
Yeah.
That, that's my.
But I think it's also, you have a lot of committees, and so I think the question was, to some extent, are they adding value, however you define that?
Right.
And if the answer is yes, then great, and if the answer is no, then maybe you think about, does this committee need to continue to accept?
There's a handful of committees that are really, and I hate to put it that way to diminish people's work. There's a handful of committees that are, and boards, committees, and commissions that are really important, and they, they're doing their thing. And I, as I said, months ago now, that the community involvement aspect of something like the Recreation Commission, I think, is important, regardless of whether or not you really feel that they're making a, a huge impact on the situation. It doesn't cost us a lot of money to have them exist, it's just, you know, it's, it's, it has, it, it has intangible benefits.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
So that's, I mean, I don't know.
You may wanna think about whether to change the number of board members on the Recreation Commission.
Right.
Um, because listening, if it's seven, a quorum is four, they only have four. They all have to show up presumably to have a meeting, so if you drop it down to five.
It's also like council, council on aging, council on aging has like, how many members on council on aging, Larry?
I think it was about five, right, there were six people there today.
But I mean, I think it's, I think it's something like, I thought it was more like ten or twelve, something is a lot, it's a lot, and it's never filled.
We could, we could, we could. It might have been more, I mean, that's one thing I wanna look into.
You know, so.
They could all be smaller. Are you sorry to find volunteers?
I just think we need to take a high-level approach to make our recommendations about, it's all well and good to get rid of the ones that are no good, to identify trouble ones. You know what I mean?
And suddenly, you're looking at Chris's face.
I was like, don't say that.
Well, it is, wide-missed words.
That may no longer be used.
Yeah. And then, but we have to have an old, we have to have a high-level view of what, because what's the name of this committee? It's very long, the.
It's agreed to review the purpose, composition, functionality, and effectiveness of the standing committees of the town.
That's every quality of a committee that you could list on it, so.
But we have done very little work on the purpose and the composition of these committees. And I don't mean that, like, you know.
That's as broad as it could be, you know, I mean.
No, no, but what I mean is, we could have taken all forty commission, all forty boards, and each of us, there's five of us, and we split them into groups, okay, maybe not the regulatory, cause there's not much we're gonna change, okay, so the advisories, and we could have divvied them up, and said, everybody read through the purpose, do we think that that's a good purpose? Check, nope, it needs a little work, we send it back to the committee, maybe we ask them what needs. And then we say the composition, it's made up of the, uh, council on aging, I swear, I think it's like thirteen members, it's something crazy, it's a lot. We never had that many people, I think we should back it down to seven, cause we're always on about whether the time of day is right.
That's a good idea.
It has nothing to do with the time of day, we just maybe have too many members.
Well, you're never gonna meet a quorum if, if that's.
Yeah, but, so it's kinda like, we haven't even done like the basics of purpose and composition. We have spent a lot of time talking about how can we make something more effective, because we have one or two that are really struggling to be effective, and we think our purposefully could be useful to us, and we really want that purpose to be fulfilled, and then we have all these other ones that are doing pretty good, and we don't even need to worry about them, so maybe we need to like, think about purpose, composition, wrap that up. Maybe think about a formal, what could we do, deal with the human services, and. Well, I think the.
Wow, there should be a council on aging consisting of three-member classifications, nine regular members, one alternate member, and two associate members.
It's a lot of members.
It's a lot of members.
It's too many members.
I think, I think it might just be as easy as all of you going down the list of committees and just circling the ones that you have questions about. And, because I don't think that there's much of a purpose to review the purpose and composition until you have your list, and like, some of that list is gone.
Yeah, I mean, but I think if we look at the composition, like, you know, council on aging functions really well, we're not worried about it, except for that when you read the composition, guess what? That's not so good.
But I guess the question is, is that a problem for them? If they're functioning well and it's working, then maybe you leave it alone.
I, I don't know, I think, I think that it's been kind of an issue where the whole question keeps coming up, maybe we should have the meetings at a different time, because then maybe more people would attend, I don't know.
That was my suggestion, you know, but I, I'm not.
Yeah, it just seems like they, it seems like they always have like four or five members missing, meaning not filled. The spots are literally not filled, is what I'm saying, as the person who's on appointments, chair, I'm like.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, see, I just, I wonder how you, how you have a quorum then, because.
It's not been filled the whole time. No, well, I mean, they.
The form doesn't change.
Yeah, I, I have no idea, cause I've been watching the meetings, but it's a lot of members, and it, we have never had ten people applying for that. So we've ne, in the two years we've been doing it, it's never been filled. So I'm thinking, just looking at the composition, we need to think about redoing the composition.
And then, composition is such a broad term, too. Does that mean that you could look at an, we should, you'd look at an individual on the commit, board, committee, and commission and say, I don't like the composition of this committee?
No, just, no, composition is either gonna be the number of members, or whether the board has qualifications for certain members, like on the Shellfish Committee, where three board members shall be commercial fishermen, you know? So I think the composition is, 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 you know, whether people need to have certain qualifications to be on that, and the number, I think. Not, not individual people, no.
Still seems like a very vague, just seems like a very vague.
And, and I'm gonna chime in regarding purpose. I recall years ago, there used to be such a contentious relationship between the commercial shellfishermen and, um, and the town staff. Years ago, when town staff used to, natural resource officers used to carry guns, it was, it was quite a while ago. But now we don't see that, we don't, people who used to, commercial shellfishermen mostly, would come to town council meetings, from the field with their boots on, and, and yell at the town council. We don't see that now, cause the Shellfish Committee works out a lot of that, um, a lot of their, um, their concerns, their problems, and, and I'm saying the, it functions well by keeping that away from public comment, because they work out the problems amongst themselves. It can be lively sometimes, but I, I do think that that's a fun, is providing a function that we're not gonna see, but it's.
Yeah, that's the whole purpose of the delegation of the responsibility.
Yeah, it's, it's working, and there are stakeholders that are aware. When they talk about Joe's Grant, everybody knows where Joe's Grant is, rank and file, and people sitting in the audience aren't gonna know that. So I'm saying, that community takes care of the problems, although it needs updating in the code. But I'm just saying, the, these, um, the golf committee is probably similarly are familiar with their issues, and they, they can work it out. So I do think that even if they don't look like, um, how do I wanna say, they're, they're, uh, making robust accomplishments, I think that they know their problems, and it's working, uh, to benefit the town, and quite frankly, benefit the town council that way. So that's my two cents about that. But I do think that we have, I think, three types of scholarship committees, and if there was a way to, to streamline that. Martin J. Flynn was a, um, selectman years ago, and when he passed away, there was a, a scholarship that was established. There's only two thousand dollars left in there, I'm not so sure we need, uh, a committee to.
Cause that one, I believe, is the one, so there's legislation creating it, or authorizing its creation, and I think the money comes from check-offs on people's.
Right, tax, uh, on, um.
Their taxes, I think, it was some, something where, that's why the state had to authorize it, because we couldn't have done that on our own, so. Yeah, that's the recommendation, we can certainly look into cleansing it down, but then, you know, you can't just tran, transfer that function over some to, to another scholarship.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, two thousand dollars, give it, give a thousand dollars to two kids and, and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
But the other, there's another scholarship committee, so there were like three scholarship committees, I'm sorry.
JFK, JFK Trust.
One, I don't know.
Yes, yeah, the trust fund committees, there's JFK Trust Fund Committee, and then there's, um,
A scholarship.
Just Trust Fund Advisory Committee, Scholarship Committee.
So that's where I think that there's, might be some similar, but different, um, um, enabling legislation.
We wouldn't, yeah, we, exactly, we'd need to go back and look at how it was created.
So Alison, do you have the list there, the breakdown of advisory regulatory, is that what?
Uh, yeah.
She has, yeah.
Yes, I think, I think I highlighted, yeah, I highlighted the, uh, regulatory. So, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, ZBA, License Authority, Old Kings Highway.
It's elected, yeah.
Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, and the Appeals Committee, uh, Airport Commission, Planning Board, Board of Registars.
Oh, and the other beef I, I, well, not, the other, the other, um, the other realization I came to is, in all those committees listed, we have the Barnstable Housing Authority. No, it's an elected, it's an elective. No, it's an elected, it's an elective, but so is Old Kings Highway, and so is, um, School Committee.
School.
Mm-hmm.
So Barnstable Housing should be on that list.
That was one of the recommendations, we're gonna fix the website.
Yeah.
The public.
That was it, that was what the record is.
That was the reason.
That's right.
Is to separate out, like.
Regulatory versus advisory.
Like, to make it more clear, because you're right, Barnstable Housing Authority isn't a town council committee.
Communications. No, but if scholarship, I mean, if, um, School Committee is, is on that list, so should Barnstable Housing. It should be, it's, it's a group in the town of Barnstable. Otherwise it's hidden, you go Google it and.
Yeah, have you been to their website? It's not very.
I know, and why is it on its own without any public company?
It's really bad.
Yeah, I did, I looked at it the other day, you can't find it.
Yeah, there's no public accountability for that, in my opinion.
It's really bad.
But it's still a functioning committee in our town, it should be, it should be somewhere.
So under, under, um, advisory committees, can you just give us a quick rundown of those?
Yeah, uh, Council on Aging, Community Preservation Committee, Disability Commission, Golf Committee, Historical Commission, Housing Committee, Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, JFK Memorial Trust Fund Committee, Waterways Committee, Youth Commission, Shellfish Committee, Problem Properties Appeals Committee.
That, that doesn't exist anymore.
I've never heard of that.
Yeah.
That doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, it doesn't?
Well, I, I think that.
I don't know.
I don't know, they're still left.
That is, back in the day, that was the precursor to, um, Assistant Town Manager, um, his pro- his enforcement.
Isn't that the Historical Commission, is that advisory? Something that would be regulatory.
Yeah.
The advisor, you're gonna take those.
That used to be a committee where they, they would get a bunch of people together for problem problems.
Yeah.
Well, I was on that, so Problem Properties were basically.
But I don't, I don't think that that's, that's, is that even in the code?
So you think maybe that makes it on your list of.
Is that even in the code somewhere?
I don't remember seeing that one anywhere.
Problem Properties, it's in the code.
No, no, but the committee.
Okay.
It's in your whitelist.
Yeah. I, yeah, I'm, I have it here for, I think I went through.
Oh, committee, no, I don't know, that's true, sorry.
I think, I, I think it must be, cause I went through the code at some point and created this.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I remember what it is, is when a problem property happens, it's supposed to be dealt with a committee of people that are like residents and other.
I don't know. Like creation.
I do remember reading that, but as far as like, we don't, I don't.
Members, minutes, agenda?
Yeah, we don't know who that is or where that is or how.
Or we would have been used to.
Puts that together.
So those are the committees I think we should be looking at and just say.
Okay. So Problem Properties. Open Space Committee.
Yeah.
Human Services, Water Resources Advisory Committee.
That doesn't exist anymore.
That doesn't exist anymore. Uh, Scholarship Committee, Trust Fund Advisory Committee, Barnstable Municipal Water Su- Water Supply Board. Elderly and Disabled Taxation Aid Committee, Cultural Council, Recreation Commission, Affordable Housing Growth and Development Trust Fund Board, Economic Development Task Force.
That's no longer.
It's retired.
Did we retire it?
Um, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just banned by Matt.
Yeah.
Oh, um, Local Comprehensive Planning Committee, Barnstable Housing Authority.
I think that's our.
See, elderly and disabled.
I think, I think it's one.
Elderly and Disabled Taxation Aid Committee.
Is that tr- is that true?
I don't remember seeing that either either.
Yeah, I think they, I think they, I think it might be.
But not.
Karen, is that a, like a, um, behind closed doors, the elderly taxation, cause I think it's people's private.
I've never heard of it, it's on, I'm looking.
Financial, it's a.
That's, no, that's, I mean, I'd say similar to that, as long as by the county, that's that shine program.
I don't see it anywhere.
Send that to me.
About the Lombard Trust.
It's the regular one, I don't see that down there.
Oh, the break down.
They need already to be.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have gotten to the trust, I just would not.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we think about the housing committee being sunset.
Abolished, yes.
There, call, we'll call them in then.
Did we already have them?
No, we had Jim Cupfer.
Okay, I'd like to make a.
Yeah, well, this is the Cheryl, Cheryl's committee.
No, Housing Committee.
The Housing, yes.
Yeah, the Housing Committee. I don't see it, I don't see it.
Golden Hague, it's the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know where I would have gone it, other than.
I'm gonna put that forward.
I think the Historical Commission.
I just, I feel like.
Why don't we do that for the next meeting?
I, I just feel like.
Something.
Yeah, I do too.
You know, they're, what they're providing, again, it seems like there's not a plug in place, kinda like human services.
It's still code, but.
And we have, we have the planning department, we have.
Yeah, so that's. We've stuffed it in the code, you might wanna get rid of it.
Chico, right, who's more involved in the housing and the things. Um, we have the planning board, people think that.
I have the housing.
The planning board, the housing stuff, Cindy, it's, it's kinda like, literally adding to the process.
Well, like, to see this, I guess, so we, I just think we need to be decisive. So if you wanna be frank about the whole situation, we could probably lose the Housing Committee, the Golf Committee, the Recreation Commission, the, um, the Human Services.
Oh, I don't think. Oh, no, I don't.
But like, do you see what I'm saying? Like, if we're gonna go at it and we're gonna really go at it, and we're gonna say, what is it that we're really getting out of all these things? We might as well, there's probably five or six of those that I just named that we could just lose, and they'd be fine. Because we have town department staff that are capable of executing all that work independently, like.
Yeah, but having listened to the, to the recreation, having talked with the town manager about golf, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put those.
Those too.
But you, but you, but you see what I'm saying in terms of like, what you, what are the actual factual boots on the ground realities of the, those organizations?
I wouldn't. I think I could, yeah.
They could easily function without those, either would still be able to do it. All I'm saying is, and I'm not saying that I advocate that, I'm saying that we need to be decisive and we need to figure out what it is we're trying to, what we're gonna say. Cause I for one, don't wanna continue to go around robbing about a million different ideas and a million different things and a million different committees. I'd like to focus on what we're, what, you know, our recommendations are gonna be the following. It sounds like we have a somewhat consensus view as it pertains to those committees that we're gonna get rid of that are just.
On the list.
No longer functional. Then we have, uh, reporting seems to be a big deal to us, or to me anyway, in, insofar as maintaining a connection between the boards, committees, commissions, and the town council. In order to standardize the process of reporting, make sure that people know we're watching. You know, if we come by and knock on the window once in a while to say, what can we do? Do you see what I'm saying? I just wanna have a directed task, so then, what's the next thing? So we still wanna bring in some boards, committees, and commissions. There's still some that might be contentious, or in contention, say, the Housing Committee.
I just have the two, from my point of view.
Where do we go?
And you know, on the Human Services Committee, I mean, cause I've heard, you know, the committee is ineffectual. I've also heard, but, you know, from other people, but it's an important committee for the town to have. So maybe you look at their charge and you say, they're not really being directed to do what we want a human services committee to do. You know, we want them to advise on these three things, or, or whatever it is. And maybe look at, look at the charge that they have and decide whether that's actually the right charge for an effective human services committee. Because when I looked at it, I was like, I can't even tell what they're supposed to do.
It's so broad, and there's not a connection, like, I think that was what came out of it, was their charge is very broad. But on top of that, there's no way for them to plug into anything we're doing. There's not a, we don't have a human services department.
But maybe narrow the charge and say, here are the three things we really care about, that's what we want you to focus all your time and energy on. And we want you to advise us on this, this, and this. And then see if they're an effective committee. Right now, when I read their charge, it, it doesn't really say anything to me.
And they were created by a town councillor. One town councillor wanted that committee.
Well, again, that, you know, I think the question is, do you want that committee?
So I'm saying we could now revise it.
Does it serve a purpose? Does it serve a purpose with its current charge?
Yeah.
You know, or does it not serve a purpose at all? But if you think it has, the idea of a human services committee has value, then I think maybe you think about restructuring, like what they do. Like what you expect from them.
I thought, I thought what, what was gonna happen is they were gonna recommend a position within the town that would be kind of like the department that they would liaison with to actually make their background knowledge. Like, you know, we think that we could help access these resources and we'd give it to the person who then can get that out to the community. Kinda like, we have, we have the Recreation Committee who goes to the Recreation Department. Right, we, right now, we have a human services committee who reports to nobody.
Right.
Right, but when you, when you read the code, it says they're gonna advise on the human condition of the town. What, what does that mean?
No, I get that point, but what I'm saying is over and above that, they don't have anybody that they report to. They have all this knowledge.
Or work with.
Or work with, they're, they're, I mean, they could be yelling over here, there's a fire. But they don't have a fire department to send out to put out the fire, is what I'm saying. So it's like, there's not a, there's not a link.
Yeah, cause we have a broad.
I think having them sort of recommend, you know, staff positions, that seems weird to me. I mean, we have a human resources department, and I think that's who you.
Yeah, but human services versus human resources, human services accessing homelessness, drug and alcohol addiction counseling, mental health.
You may wanna consider, in, on that note, again, that goes to composition and who may serve really well in terms of their background. Because as you all know, probably maybe, I come from Brockton, who has a, a city social worker. Is it helpful to have, and I don't know if I already got this up, is it helpful to have somebody with a background like that come onto the?
Yeah.
So that's also something you're taking into consideration.
Well, the committee has those people on the committee, that, I mean, that's the thing. They have a great group of knowledgeable individuals. The problem is, is again, they're yelling fire, and there's no department to send out to put out the fire.
But are they even yelling fire? Like, what are they talking about? Like, I don't know what they're recommending.
Daddy?
I don't know what they're focused on, I don't know what they think they should be focused on.
The biggest thing they've been working on for two years is creating a database, so people can come to our town website and see the various service organizations. I'm not sure what the value is in that.
That sounds.
No, spending two years on that?
I've been the liaison for, I guess, almost three years, so three years.
See, I, I, I think it's backwards. I think the council should decide, do we want a human services committee, yes or no? If the answer is yes, what do you all want them to be focused on and doing?
Do we want a database? Then you gotta upkeep the database. Every database comes with a huge tail.
Well, and they're an advisory committee, they're not gonna upkeep the database. Like, it's gonna, it's gonna end up being a staff responsibility. And if that's something that.
So there is no staff.
Right, well, they don't have staff, the town has staff.
No, but who has staff?
Yeah, but there's no human services staff, that's part of the problem.
That was part of our conversation. It was sort of a broader conversation about the nature of our interaction with what we consider human services. Like you say in Brockton, you know, we have, we're, we have, we're a city with city problems. And there's maybe some blind spots that we have in terms of how we address those problems and how we engage with the community in this certain, you know, the homelessness, drug addiction, and all the various aspects. We have nobody, I mean, you've got the cops doing what the cops do, and you've got, the closest thing we have would be Recreation Department or something. You know what I mean? Like, there's, then that's it, and then you got the one line, but.
But if you're, you're in crisis.
We were trying to figure out, yeah, how do we put it?
No, no, who would you engage with? You'd probably engage with the hospital or the police.
And the police department. But, so we were kinda talking at that time about, and that was kinda the inspirational aspect of what we were trying to say that. And it wasn't necessarily just not for them to think about, I think we as a, as a community, as a town council, need to have this discussion as well. And maybe as a function of our strategic planning, whatever, that, I wanted them to create a, if they're, they're all, they are all qualified people and they have, they have the background theoretically to pull it off, I wanted to see them give us the inspiration to, of how this is. How, how can we better approach this problem going forward? As a group of professionals who are on this committee, regardless of what your charge says, it's a human services committee. How do we get into the business of human services? How can you help us to do that? And I thought that that would pick them going.
I think you can, you can recommend to the council changing their charge to be more specific and clear as to what you want them to be spending their time on and what you want them advising the council on.
Right, we could. We could do, then we could change the charge to that, to very specifically, that we are endeavoring to expand our human resources business. Or, yeah, not human resources, human services presence, and how do we then, you know, you guys like.
Well, we're looking for concrete recommendations, you know, or whatever, whatever it is, but.
Right. And that's kinda what I was trying to get them to do in order to feel better about it, but it's not working, apparently, do you know what I mean to?
Yeah. I mean, I think for your committee, because, you know, the title is so long, um, you may wanna just pick three or four, you know, concrete things that you can affect change on and make those recommendations. And think about, you're not gonna, you're not gonna rewrite the code overnight, and you're not gonna probably make recommendations to rewrite the code. But there might be some big picture things. I would, I would kinda narrow your focus to whatever it is you think would have a good impact and that would fit within the charge of your committee. That's what I would do, cause I think the charge is, is so broad.
That's what I'm trying to say, is that if, at least it for my, if we can just have this new framework, which may already exist, but we're refreshing the work, everybody that. This is the framework, this is how it's supposed to work in the council's interaction with committees. This is what we expect. This is our number one recommendation, is that this be what we expect. That there be a very clear cut use, or a regulated use of this referral process, so that the committees are being fed work.
I like the referral, I'd like to formalize that, I mean.
Right, how do we do it? That's, let's do, that, absolutely.
That would be one right there.
And then we have maybe reporting, I feel good about that, I don't know how you guys feel. But it's already in the, it's already in the, the code or whatever. But did there, if it needs to get tweaked or just to refresh it and bring it back out and say, we are gonna, we recommend that the schedule start on whatever day. That, you know, however it's done alphabetical order or order, but whatever you, however you wanna sort it out, that we're bringing in the committee starting this day.
You could say, like, at the first council meeting of each month, except for maybe in budget season, you know, that three or four committees each make a report, they each get three minutes, and they should all present their report in this format.
Right, and they can send it to us ahead of time.
Give them a standard format, standard.
Yeah, so that we can read it in ahead of time, and then if Betty has questions for that particular person, you know, whichever, whatever, that we'll just. We're gonna make time for it.
I could give them like a prescribed period of time, so the meetings don't go on forever, and say, keep it short, keep it in this format, you know? We're gonna do it on a regular schedule, and we're gonna have whatever number committees you wanna come report.
Yeah, that's why oversight exists, there has to be oversight, or else the people just go off and do their own thing.
Which is what some committees are doing.
Right, precisely. So without oversight, there, why have, I mean, that's why oversight exists.
And communication.
Yeah.
All Karen's idea, we get three minutes, we, we adjust for the amount of meetings we have. Not during the budget season, but say, four committees, each got three minutes. Send us a thing a week before, here's what you're gonna go over, and period.
And just for the advisories, just for the advisory committees, we don't need the regulatory ones to probably.
Ask a few questions, and that's it.
And that would be a mandatory.
Because we don't really have much say over that, other than appointing them.
Well, and the advisory committees are advisory, they shouldn't be talking to you.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
Right, they should be advising us, imagine that.
Yeah, so that's what I think.
Well, they not only advise us, but they advise the staff, you know?
Yeah, the town manager and the departments, yeah.
So, so that, communications, we might not see a lot of it, but a lot of it might happen without coming to the council.
Well, and that's kinda the thing about human services, they have nobody to report to, they don't report to the council.
Yeah, I hear you.
But even if they came to the council, they could say, you know, we've had ongoing discussions with staff about these seven issues.
Obviously, sure.
You know?
Right, just an oversight, just oversight.
They don't have to get into each issue so much, but they could let you know, we've been busy and we've been doing this and we've been helpful.
And making them feel like they have a place at the table too.
Yeah, and I, I recall Jessica calling in, at that time it was called the Land Acquisition and Preservation.
It's like validation for them too.
Right, yeah.
You felt proud to say, look.
Everybody's there.
They're putting in the time and then no one ever hears from them.
Yeah, it is labor and ambiguity.
Well, and I think human services has felt that, they had no staff support, they were not videotaped. They, they really were operating in the ether, so I mean.
Nothing, I said ambiguity, I meant to say obscurity.
Um, so going forward, how about if we go with Allison's suggestion that we go through the list and look at those, those that we might have, each of us do that.
Why don't you send us that list one more time, Allison?
I just, I just listened to this and I can think it too, and other than that, I'm solid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I was, I was going off.
And there's a bunch of weird ones in there that none of us know.
I was going off the list that's on the website.
Yeah, no, I know.
So.
So we should take a last look and just make sure there are real committees on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those I didn't see on the original list.
They're real.
Well, the elderly and disabled ones, not in the code, but it's on the website. So I don't, there is a statute, I think, hold on, dance.
Maybe this, as you said, that is.
There is a, where am I? Yeah, there's a state statute, Mass General law chapter sixty, section three D that creates it.
So it's not in the town code, it's a state, state.
But do we people it with anyone?
What's it called again?
Um, the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Aid Committee.
It's funny, 'cause it's under the list of committees, under A through H, it's not even on there. Or maybe I spelled wrong.
But we don't appoint anyone to it.
El- elderly.
There's a state.
Something wrong here.
We'd have to look at the law.
No, it is, I just saw it, I just saw it, it should be on there.
What's the tab, what's the chapter?
Do you see?
Sixty, sixty.
That's just every day.
Should be right here, right?
About the.
Oh, it says, it's under Barnstable Elderly and Disabled.
Thank you, I was like.
A city or town which accepts the provisions of this section, which presumably we did, is hereby authorized, subject to the approval of the commissioner, to design and designate a place on its municipal tax bills, wait, what about what about? For the purpose of defraying the real estate taxes of elderly and disabled persons of low income. I'm looking for an actual committee. Ah, there shall be, in any city or town establishing an aid to the elderly and disabled taxation fund, there shall be a taxation aid committee to consist of the chairman of the board of assessors, the city or town treasurer, and three residents of the city or town to be appointed by the mayor or board of selectmen as the case may be, that would be Mark. Um, which is why you guys don't know.
No records for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Said board shall adopt rules and regulations to carry out the provisions of this section and to identify the recipients of such a. So, yeah, I don't know anything about this committee, but I would think that the three residents are appointed by the town manager.
Well, just to let you know, there's literally no records from twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-five on the website.
Is there one from twenty-two?
Let me look. You're curious.
I have no comment without showing more.
So, I don't know what, what do you recommend for us? Because I know we brought up, and there seems to be consensus or support for the fact that the, um, these regulatory committees and the advisory should all be identified by their, by their authority. Whether they're elected, or it's advisory, or regulatory, or town manager appointed. So there was some talk of, 'cause it couldn't be done in categories, then maybe it could be color-coded, is that?
Yeah, I mean, the way I did it, if I just highlighted them, because some of them are actually.
But you mean color-coded on the website?
On the website, yeah, for the public.
No, no, Chris is talking on the website. Yeah, for the, maybe, because some of them are advisory and regulatory, so.
For the public, yeah. I, I, I don't know, that's a little question. I know.
So.
It could be two colors.
I don't wanna read anything that Lynn isn't, isn't nodding her head to.
But you're saying the elderly, um.
They could be footnoted, I think, right?
Text, texting.
They should put footnote.
Well, housing should be on there, should even be on there.
Next to regulatory, something like that.
Or you could have a separate list, regulatory committees of the town, advisory committees of the town.
I think what Chris is saying is that can't be done like that on the website, 'cause the website's old, right?
Well, Lynn said they couldn't, that the webmaster could not, um, um, do it in.
Like columns?
In sections, or sections, somehow broken out.
I think to retool the website is not, we are not able to.
Apparently that page is, is problematic. But if they can color-code it or somehow differentiate how, how, um, a particular committee derives its authority, because we don't have to worry about the elderly taxation, because it's in state code, not, not town code. So, um, I'm just saying, so that, that explains a lot. And if you're a naive resident.
Right, town councillor.
Right? Well, um, at least you have this idea where the, um, where to find the authority.
Although I guess if I'm a resident, like, why do I need, I'm not saying they shouldn't know that, but I'm not sure why it's the most important thing for them to know. I think what they need to know is what the committee does and, and how it works.
Well, I guess for counselors, it's good to know, is it a committee we mess around with or not? You know, it's not our authority, leave it alone, you know, we have the authority over.
Well, but most of them are your authority, I mean, in terms of appointments at least.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but you know what, there's a lot, there's a hand, there's.
There's some that are, yeah, no, there's some that are.
There aren't, that are, that are under that same list, so it does get confusing, 'cause we had this whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, we could certainly provide whatever information you want, I would just think about what's useful.
Town council rules.
And I, I can't speak to the website, so Lynn would have to weigh in on that.
I understand.
Yeah, I clearly got this list from somewhere, because there's, but there's some on the website that are not on my list.
Oh, okay.
But then there's, all of these aren't in the code. So I don't know if it's based off of the one that Cindy did originally when we started.
Yeah, because the one she gave us that didn't have that, the elderly tax payment one.
Yeah, I'll have to go back through my emails, 'cause this was from, I wrote this in March, so I, I don't remember, but I'll.
But it's.
Either way, if, if you want me to send you a list of regulatory versus advisory, I can do that.
So, just one last thing, I'm not, I'm not gonna drag it out a lot longer. Can we, can we have Allison, or, um, can we get some language for some of these things that we already agree on? So we have a couple of recommendations on our, you know, under our belt? So that we have stuff to, to feel like we've, you know, we crossed a certain miles, so.
The first stuff was done very easily.
Yeah, but I'm talking, yeah, like the, we already talked about, you have, I presume you have the committees that are gonna go that are no longer reason, that are no longer even germane, right?
Yeah, you've already, you all have already voted that, to recommend.
Yeah, and what were the other, do we have any other recommendations that we voted on, or are they all just speculative?
I don't think we voted on anything else.
No, we voted on, uh.
It's, and I do have councillor Crowe's memo that he wrote, maybe it's.
Right, the one you gave us last time.
That was a synopsis of today.
Oh, yeah, I just didn't know if you put in here. Yeah, the, uh, taking out the library committee, water quality committee.
Jay Neshba.
Roads, Jay Neshba, cable television, so those are all the ones that we did take out.
Task force, economic development task force, the, uh, the RAC.
Uh-huh.
Water Resources Advisory Committee.
I think there was some discussion about, like, limiting how many committees people could be on.
We voted on that.
You did vote on that?
We voted on that was.
We voted to recommend.
Chair.
Term limits.
How many, term limits, how many, how many you can chair?
Term limits, yeah. Oh, right, right, right.
Dogs.
So you can only chair one, which I thought was fair, you shouldn't have to send people doing it to fifteen different committees. And term limits, I think they decided to, six or nine, I think it was six years.
One of the twos.
We, we were, it was six or nine, one of the two.
On a particular committee.
On a particular committee.
I think it was six.
I think it was six too.
So those are, that was a long time ago now, wasn't it? Is that why? But, uh, but we are okay with the, or you wanna go on?
Well, I was gonna say councillor Turkelson's suggestion about limiting the number of people in council on aging, after today's discussion, I'd say that's a worthy, um, recommendation.
I do, let's put that in there.
So I think we need to look at the concept.
So, I mean, take a whole list and see, go through it and just.
And also.
And the recreation commission.
What was his name, Tony?
Mm-hmm.
Tony, yeah, that's why I asked him this.
It's not often, 'cause the website's not up to date.
Anyway, Tony said that we could go down to five members, or whatever it was.
Yeah, 'cause they're at seven.
We oughta put that down, so it's easier for me quorum and that kinda stuff, that's another suggestion. Um, also Karen, your suggestion about focusing our committee, because this is, this is just overwhelming, it's too much to discuss. Um, and, 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 and square away. I think we have a number of committees that are, five or three, that are fine. I think we gotta pick the ones that we think that are, that can be, we can discuss whether they should go on. And, um, and then move on from there. I, I, we can go on forever doing this, okay?
I mean, you could even, if you wanted to, say, we're gonna focus on these three, four, whatever thing.
Yeah.
And if there's another iteration of this committee, we recommend that they look at this in phase two or something. You could do that if you wanted.
So first thing I wanna do, Karen, maybe you can do this for, uh, on the agenda, is to extend our time for what?
That, I think just the council person can do that.
All right, so how long?
I think that's what we've been doing, I'm not sure that's legit, but.
Well, how long do you think?
We've been doing it, so whatever.
'Cause it's after this month was our, we were.
It was September thirtieth, it said.
So.
Oh, years then.
Years then, okay, 'cause a lot of stuff with the holidays and everything else.
Yeah, so we really.
Oh, it was years then?
Years then, okay.
Extend that to years then.
Yeah.
So, Chris, would you, would you ask Craig to do that for us?
Yeah.
And then, uh, put on the agenda. Um, like I said, I think we've gotta, we've gotta narrow what we're doing. We have a charter that means totally everything. It's too much and we're, we're sort of floundering around about, about a focus. So, everybody's opinion was we should, we should look at the three or four committees that we can pick out of there going forward at the next meeting, which that's gonna be one of the things on the agenda, pick out the four or five committees that we wanna, uh, focus on and then, um, decide what we wanna do with those committees that have not already decided, we don't need any longer. We're gonna get what Sheryl Powell comes up with by Friday, we'll send that around. We can decide what to do with human services. And, um, and anybody else's suggestions. So this is what the, I tend, uh, the agenda for next meeting. So, um, let's say.
So, I was gonna say, I could write off everything you just said down, if you want me to say that to you.
Yeah, that would be good.
So, you wanna vote on recreation commission members down to five?
Yes.
You wanna vote on council, on aging members down to something? I think right now it says nine regular members and then there's particular.
They were alternates and associates.
So maybe down to seven or something like that, five?
Do you, do you guys wanna give us a recommendation on that?
I was just gonna say, um, you may want to, and I guess, it sounds like Chris Canelo was already here talking to you, but you may wanna get his input on that. I'm a little uncomfortable recommending anything on that committee, since I don't deal with them, but he does all the time, so I think.
You're talking about the?
The council on aging.
Council on aging.
You may wanna hear from him if you're gonna make recommendations about the composition, just.
And then in, he, also about recreation commission might as well, about the limiting of those numbers, same, same conversation.
Yeah, you might as well talk to him about that. Yeah.
Um, and then I will send a list of the regulatory versus advisory committees to you all and then you all will go through that list and pick out committees that you think you, you'd need, you need some more information. Of the advisory, exactly, need some more information that you wanna focus in on whether or not we need to keep them or not. And then we're gonna get Cheryl Powell and Human Services report by the end of the week, so you'll all be able to have that.
Um, maybe think about the format of the report that you're looking for.
Yeah, so, I know, I know, uh, councillor Brittick is really set on the, like, making sure we use the referrals town council rule. And so I don't know what a recommendation looks like that, other than like a reminder or a recommendation to try to utilize that more or something like that.
And same thing with the referral, or the, not the referral, but the reporting.
Reporting, exactly, so then the reporting, you'd recommend utilization of that more often, but we'd come up with a form. So you wanna think about what kind of information you want from the committees in that report and then the three-minute limitation on coming in and presenting.
Three days, bullets, three, three minutes, so we're not, it's a regular thing, we're done quickly, we look after nine minutes if there are three committees. And, and none of us sit down in front of the council and get all the people together and talk for twenty minutes.
It should be the chairs, because you don't want quorums showing up, it's just, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's our Jennifer, next, next meeting.
Allison.
Okay, anything else?
Can I ask one other question?
Did he call you Jennifer?
No, 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 he said agenda, Jennifer, he said Jennifer.
Can I just ask?
No, I'm terrible with names, I don't do that.
I'm sorry, I'm tired.
About the concept of unappointing rooms, is that a conversation for here, or is that a?
Oh, you mean removal of board members. So, um, we were going to, it's late, so maybe not so today, but.
No, that's fine, do you want to just do that next time?
And, and actually, so we've been working on a memo, um, because as usual, it's not just a straightforward, one-sentence answer. Um, but what the process would be to remove board members, and it depends, it depends how the committee was created. Um, so Allison's done a lot of work on this, we're just getting that in final form.
Okay.
We will provide that memo to all of you. Um, so you know, basically, if and when that issue comes up, how the council, and it is, ultimately it's action by the council and then, you know, how that works.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we.
Perfect, thank you.
We're on it.
Awesome, no, I just, I didn't, I, we had, you had said we'll talk about it here, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but you guys were, you know, I figured.
Yeah, no, that's perfect, thank you.
The council has done that before, so.
Well, it's just like, you know, there's.
No, it's doable.
Yeah, there's variations of.
But it's a public process.
Yeah, there's variation.
Always done, it's a vote of the council in public, absolutely, yeah.
But the question is, is how does that even get to the council? Is it the chair goes to leadership, is the chair goes to the appointments committee?
I don't know how it came to the council.
Well, I mean, that's kinda like, we need to.
Again, it's not the appointments committee, 'cause the appointments committee is recommending appointments.
No, I know. But, but like, we have somebody, a chair, saying, I'd like you to remove this person from my committee.
Right, and so I saw President Tamish this morning and I said we were going to be providing this memo to all of you as part of the committee's work, I was going to provide him, you're obviously here, so you'll get it, um, with a copy of the memo. And then I think we would take each individual case as it comes up. I don't think we need a whole full-blown process for how that issue gets teed up. I think, um, you know, if something gets put on the agenda, the process is that goes through leadership and, and they, you know, we have that discussion. Um, I don't wanna discuss that particular instance at this meeting, but, um, I think, you know, there may be ways to address that issue without it becoming a whole full-blown thing, so.
Yeah, well, there might be ten different reasons why someone is no longer.
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna get into.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like, it, it might not be one answer, it's probably a case-by-case basis.
But I guess what I'm saying is, you know, you may have to go through a formal process or there may be ways to address the concern without that happening.
Okay.
Depending on the facts.
Okay, Allison, you'll, um, get that to Cindy for the next agenda for the, for the meeting, okay?
Does she?
I just got noticed that she's, um, got cleared to work from.
Working remotely, okay, yeah, I can send her. Um, so it's limiting those members, choosing, well, I think that the, the list of committees in the focus, I think will just be a general gen item, right? Um, 'cause you don't know what they are going to be yet. Um, human services report, discussing reporting and the removal memo, I think that's, I hope that's on right.
All right.
Great.